I will call meeting number 1,647 of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District's School Committee to order at 6 o'clock on Thursday, April 27, 2023. Do we have any school committee members remotely? No. Okay. Therefore, I will entertain a motion on the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, Art. Do we have a second?
Second.
And that was Jim. Do we have any additions or corrections? I have a couple, but I'll wait for anyone else. Okay, so I will give mine. On page four. Let's see if it prints out as page four as well.
Page four of the minutes?
It's Lucy, when Lucy's speaking. If you go down one, two, three, four paragraphs, it's both districts regional agreements. It should be districts plural apostrophe. And then, one, two, three, four, five, six, six bullets down in that section, two separate public hearings held within seven days apart. I think it was, it must be at least seven days apart.
I'm not sure.
Go down, one, two, three, four, Nancy. Go down, one, two, three, four, five, six bullets. Same section with Lucy speaking. It says two separate, she was outlining the process for school closures, and the six bullets says two separate public hearings held within seven days apart. That doesn't make sense. So they need to go back and see what she actually said. I don't know if it's, if it's at least seven days apart, or, you know, what the story is. And I know that it has to be, one of them has to be in the town where the school is located, and I know she made that point. So, okay. Then, if we go now to the superintendent's report, this part, if you go down one, two, three, four paragraphs, she testified at the Berkshire County Regional Superintendent's Roundtable, but you also, you testified before elected officials. That's, you made a point of that.
It was, yes, but, yes.
So we should, was there an official name for that gathering?
This was our, it was our super, our roundtable, and we invited the...
Okay, because it doesn't, all right.
We invited our, the Berkshire County Legislative Delegation.
All right, so that should be added.
That's what, that's what should be added.
Okay, so in, she testified at the Berkshire County Superintendent's Roundtable with Berkshire County elected representatives present. So if we can insert that. And now it makes sense there, all right. And you also told us that you homed in on a couple of special areas. Do you want that noted in here? Like you had noted to us, the inequities in funding and the rural issue.
So I posted with my report, I posted the three or four slides used plus my actual write-up, my report, so I think that would be fine. It captures everything I said.
All right, good, because the minutes in, all right. And then, this is just a little thing. On page six, with the art, art overnight trip, where it's, go down, Eboni Silas reported, she has an acquaintance on the Board of FIT, and she suggested she would try to arrange. So I did not say that I could actually do it. However, I have made progress on that. So if that could be changed. And then, I don't know if it's in terms of the minutes, but if the early college part, and this is only because I was pretty sure that you made it clear that even though the grant addresses advanced manufacturing and information technology, we are in no way eliminating the pathways that you design, you know, your team has designed. We're still pursuing those pathways that are in the handbook.
Yeah, this was just specific to this grant. These are the ones that they're pursuing under the Innovation Pathways designation at this time.
That's what I thought. Okay.
And you did have to identify a couple, so that's why.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not in any way, it's just that I already got a complaint from the public saying what happened to everything else, and I said...
Nothing.
They're all still there. Well, we heard that. So, you know, the old, we heard that. All right, you answered, and we have, anyone else have anything on the minutes? So we have a motion on the floor. Can we say, would you accept that as amended? And we have a, the second was you, Jim. You continue? Okay. In that case, why don't we take a vote? All right, Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah, Kim, Dennis, Art.
Yes.
Jim, Kyle, Bonnie, yes. All right, unanimous. All right. Miscellaneous correspondence.
I don't believe there's any in here. I don't think there's any in here.
Okay. All right. Do we have a student representative report?
I do not see a...
She was trying to get someone for tonight, but we had a host of activities games.
So we might not have anybody.
Okay. All right, so if someone appears, will you recognize?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, is that student spotlight?
Nope.
We have a student.
We have a student.
Charles?
Is he here?
He's left.
Okay, okay.
So Charles did prepare a video for us to, to, let me, screen share this with sound, so he can see this as well. This is, uh, what's ready here.
We think that being culturally aware is so important for our future generations. So I believe the older kids, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade are doing country studies. The fourth graders are studying Puerto Rico, because it's part of the United States, and they are studying their countries, so it's part of the curriculum. The fifth graders are studying Mexico, and the sixth graders are studying Spain. For the fourth grade project, they are doing Higante masks, which are part of the Carnival tradition in Puerto Rico, and they are worn by Higantes to scare off the bad spirits. It's not very socialistic going on for generations.
Great, thank you.
Did the kids actually make those?
The Higante mask from Puerto Rico.
And what's your inspiration for colors you think you're gonna do?
I think I might make my, the Puerto Rican flag. I think I'll make a Puerto Rican flag out there.
And what materials did you use?
Newspapers, newspaper and paper.
Awesome, thank you.
My mask, I'm doing the Puerto Rican design.
Okay, and what was, what was your inspiration?
Well, I actually just visited Puerto Rico, and I love Puerto Rico so much. Went to San, went to San Juan, and went to the Fort Namburu, and went to the Bible and Asim Bay, Mosquito Bay, and the Yacase, it was really cool.
Was that your favorite part, or were there more?
It was one of my favorite parts.
Awesome.
And my favorite, a different favorite part, was their design from Puebla, right off the Puebla, and it's, the water, it's so clear.
And is this mask, though, gonna give you an opportunity to talk about it during class?
Yep.
All right, awesome, thank you.
It's a project I'm doing in Spanish class. It's celebrated in Carnival for Puerto Rico.
And what are the materials you used?
Um, blue mixed with water and newspaper.
Do you know what your mask design is going to be?
Um, two cards right here and a...
Great.
Um, I'm doing a four-horn mask, the two horns coming out of the U's and two coming out of the I's. I did this because I think it looks cool.
Okay, great, and what company did you work out doing this product?
Puerto Rico.
All right, and you think you'll have a visitor card?
Uh, hopefully.
Who was the teacher?
Maps, isn't it, Maps?
And those were all made by fourth graders?
I believe so.
My kids made it in fourth grade, her kids may still have hers. I think we still have one down yonder.
Impressive.
She does a lot of projects with her kids.
Maps, and she also does it for New Marlboro Central, too, because that's where my kids had her.
Mm-hmm. And I love how articulate...
She is a very favorite among the kids.
Yeah, how articulate the students were in presenting. That's not easy.
Yeah.
All right, anyone have, anything else? Okay. Oh, he disappeared, I wanted to thank Charles.
I will do that for you.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. That was great. Public comment. And I have to say, I love the way they progress. It's Puerto Rico, Mexico, Spain, in that way. All right, any public comment? Seeing no hands. Business managers report.
We have no business managers report this evening.
Whoa, okay. Boy, we're moving along quickly.
We are.
All right.
Oh geez, we jinxed it.
What?
They told us, shush.
Don't jinx it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right, given that, let's move on to business with district member towns. As you can see, Lucy Prashker is here, the chair of the Regional Planning Board. She has let me know that she will be giving updates at each of our remaining standing school committee meetings, unless for some reason, and so she let me know in plenty of time, and unless for some reason, there is a reason not to have an update. Kim?
Is that something we voted on?
Yes.
We voted that she could do every meeting, because I don't remember voting...
We voted as long as, as there was notice, and she has given me written notice indicating exactly, you know, we'll follow the parameters with her update, and then it's time we have to be able to ask questions. So with that, Lucy.
Hi, everyone, good evening. There is some news hot off the press, which some of you may have read about yesterday, and that is that yesterday, the Massachusetts State Building Authority, the MSBA, voted to approve Berkshire Hills entering into the feasibility study for its new high school on two pathways, two options. One is for just the three towns with 485 students, and the second path, the second option they've given approval to pursue is a new high school for 620 students, which includes all eight towns, and the MSBA projection for the contribution to that joint student body coming from the five southern Berkshire towns is 135 students. So that's what they're projecting will be the high school population from the five towns in a few years. That's what they're willing to contribute to the funding of a combined student enrollment of 620. So that's actually pretty remarkable. That's not standard from the MSBA to approve proceeding down two pathways and doing project management and design work for our new high school. So that was really an important step for the work of the eight-town Regional School District Planning Board. So I wanted to report that out to you. We haven't had a full board meeting since the last time I was here to give you an update, but in addition to the MSBA news, I wanted to report that we've updated our FAQs on our website, and that was an important step for us, because the last time they had been updated was about a year ago, a little less than a year ago. So we've now updated all those FAQs. The one that's still in process is the set of FAQs under Finance, so what we have there is a place holder, is a link to the full presentation that was made on April 11 of the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee. So if you go to the FAQ under Finance, you'll see a link there to the full presentation that was made of the Finance Subcommittee recommendation on April 11. And also, there is a link to the memo that describes how the estimate, and it's an estimate, of the cost of the new high school was derived, and that memo describes five different methodologies that were used to try to estimate that cost. And what's important there, especially in light of the MSBA news, is that all those estimates that Jake Everwine did to come up with an estimated cost of $100 million for the new high school was based on a student body of 700 kids. So that's how we got to the numbers he got to in estimating the cost of the new high school. It turns out, this new high school is going to be built for 10% fewer kids, so 620 kids, as opposed to 700. So I hope that means that some of those numbers are going to get tamped down. But again, I want to stress that this is an estimate based on the information we have available now. Now that Berkshire Hills has been accepted into feasibility, they're going to hire a project manager, they're going to hire project architects, and we'll be able to sort of nail down those numbers a lot better. The other thing I wanted to report on, and this again is pretty late-breaking news, we had an educational quality Subcommittee meeting this week, and the facilitators who have been working on the ed visioning project...
Madam Chair? If I can interrupt, please? We're getting news that's been in the newspaper, you know, for multiple days now, you know, why do we need to do this?
Because the courtesy we have, there are a lot of people who didn't see anything at all about this announcement, which took place yesterday, of the MSBA, and Lucy's giving us the courtesy for those who didn't read Eileen Mooney's newsletter, or to be able to hear that information. And nothing in, in the area of the meeting we had on education, except for myself and Beth, no one, none of the rest of us were there. So this is courtesy, and there may be questions, I already have questions based on what's being said. So with that, Lucy, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank, thank you, Bonnie. So the ed visioning work has been led by the two facilitators from our foundation, and they made a presentation to our educational, educational quality Subcommittee earlier this week, which collated all the information they had gathered during their ed visioning work from students and from stakeholders across the two districts. And I think it's a very powerful presentation, I think Bonnie would agree, that it is a powerful and useful presentation for this school committee and the Berkshire Hills School Committee and stakeholders in both districts to see and consider whether or not the two districts merge. So Community Outreach and the Educational Quality Subcommittee have both asked the respective superintendents to arrange for a presentation of that work to the respective school committees and other stakeholders in the two districts, and that, that request is on the table. We do leave it up to the superintendents, anyone to structure that meeting, whether you want to do it at a school committee meeting or some other superintendent conversation meeting, but I do think it'd be really useful and worthwhile for you to see that presentation. And the last request that I just want to remind everyone is on the table, is that of our Community Outreach Subcommittee, to be able to work together with your Community Outreach Subcommittee to engage in sort of an educational campaign to get complete and accurate information out to the school community about the work of the Planning Board and the possible merger of the two districts. So that's what I have to report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, before I ask my, I turn to all of you for questions.
Are we taking a vote on the educational thing, whether we're sitting for a presentation or not?
That's in, that's, I have that in, in my report, because Beth and I were asked to, you know, basically, we're going to turn it over to the decision here, you know, what we, what we want to do, so that's coming up.
That was my question.
Okay, yes, David.
I have a question. Lucy?
You mentioned that the Educational Quality Subcommittee had met recently at our, at our Q and A with the citizens a few months ago. People had questions about what was going to happen to, to the current teachers, how the new district's high school was going to align, since there was going to be a unified school, what that was going to look like, how the curriculum was going to change. Are those things that have been decided or, or more meaningfully fleshed out by the Educational Quality Subcommittee?
Yeah, so I think the feeling of the members of that Subcommittee and the board generally, although I can't say we've had a vote on it, but I think the general feeling is that specific decisions concerning curriculum and other kinds of decisions that you as a school committee and your superintendent and district leaders make every month, every year, are going to be left to first the elected transition committee for a merged district, and then after the transition concludes, to the standing school committee of the new district, which will be made up of eight members, with three of those being resident of Great Barrington, two being resident of Sheffield, and then the others with one, each other town, each of the other six towns would have one, so a total school committee of 11. So, and I don't think we feel it is within our statutory mandate, and we don't think it would be appropriate for us to be dictating curriculum for a district not yet formed, and usurping the role of the new school committee and the new superintendent and district leaders in making those decisions. That said, this work that has been done by these facilitators has identified what they have heard are the priorities of the two districts in terms of sort of broad educational principles, and that is part of what would be presented to you, were you to agree to hear the presentation on the ed visioning work that has been done. And again, I can't stress enough that whether we merge or not, you need, I think, to listen to your stakeholders, and what they're telling you is important to them and what they want to see going forward.
Okay, speaking in terms of stakeholders, Lucy, I'm going to give you what I've been hearing a lot of lately, and it's two things. One goes to what David said, and it was almost the person, the two people who reported, who went to that last meeting where there only eight people showed up, said, what's your ed visioning committee doing? How are we supposed to vote on a, you know, mid-21st century district if you're not putting forward to us any new vision? So that's the side in terms of education. They feel they don't know what they're voting for. The other is the real nuts and bolts of, over and over again, people are saying, you're not telling me what this is going to cost me. So I think we need to look at, if your home is this, and this is what your assessment is, if the finance, and I don't know whether we could do it, I mean, you're much more intimately involved in it. People want to know what this will cost them, and they feel, even if they're feeling that they're inclined to vote for a merger, they don't feel equipped to vote for a merger. And as one of the three people from Sheffield, I don't feel I could give them an answer in that area.
Okay, well, yeah, I appreciate that. There is a lot of information that is currently available on how much actually it is projected that the town of Sheffield, for example, would save as opposed to cost, how much the town of Sheffield would save in 2026, were we to merge as compared to what they would pay were we not to merge. And that was presented at the April 11 meeting, and I think the number, the projection is $680,000, savings, not costs, savings.
It's not a real number.
So the information is being developed, some of it is out there. We can't give a firm number until, number one, the Planning Board votes on whether it accepts the Finance Subcommittee's recommendation, right? So that projection was based on the Finance Subcommittee's recommendation. And number two, these are projections, and just as you cannot, sitting here today, tell people in Sheffield what their tax bill is going to be in fiscal year 2026, neither can the Planning Board tell the people of Sheffield or any other town what their tax bill will be in 2026. But what we have done is projected what the assessments would likely be with a merger versus what the assessments would likely be without a merger. And that information, Bonnie, is posted on the website. And that information, Bonnie, is posted on the website and is available to folks. And if anyone has a particular question about their town, they can just shoot Jake an email or put a question onto the website, and we'd be happy to answer it.
Well, as you know, our last meeting, we voted that we really want for the five towns to hear from the finance committee of the regional planning board because if you go through those, and you're talking accounting phobic here. And I've spent an enormous amount of time, and I don't want, we've used the time, and I see there's a question there, but for the majority of the people, if I'm hearing it over and over again from, and people who've gathered information because there are pinpoints in the community, and they are approached, what are you doing? If we're hearing this, there is a skepticism that is a planning board I think we have to address. I mean, I can't imagine how Sheffield is saving 600 and something thousands of dollars. I'm not going to, you know, debate it here or whatever. I'll pour over the material again. But Kim, I'm going to turn to you because we've used our time up.
Okay, so I have a couple things. One, I mean, this whole thing about the merger is about improving the educational quality if we merge, and Southern Berkshire's going to do so much better with the merge and have so many opportunities. There's no, there's no information, there's nothing. So how do you tell your constituents, oh yes, it's going to be so much better, when there is no, nothing about it? What are we, it's like, just trust me? And then, secondly, about posting questions and stuff like that, I had a couple, and then the page got shut down, so.
Lucy, do you have any comment on either of Kim's?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part, someone just answered.
Yeah, if you turn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I posted a couple comments on your Facebook facts thing. Like, one of them was saying that our school was not big enough to incorporate 600 and whatever students that were projected because they were like, why not use Mount Everett? And it's like, why not use Mount Everett? And their answer on that fact page was because it's, it's definitely big enough. So why would somebody put that out there? Why would say it's not big enough to hold the capacity of students between the two merged high schools?
Well, it isn't if you include, if you include grades six through eight.
Beth, how, how, how big?
Which is what is part of the, can I just finish? Which is what's part of the merger model.
It's not true.
It actually isn't big enough. But the primary reason, Kim, the primary reason is geography. So all seven towns border Great Barrington. All, all seven of the eight towns border Great Barrington, only three of those towns border Sheffield. And it just doesn't make sense if you're merging a high school to put the high school anywhere other than in the center of those eight towns. But capacity is also a reason, and the FAQ, there is an FAQ specific to that question that is posted on the website. So if you've got follow-up questions on that, happy to hear them. On the ed quality side, I'd like to respond to that because I really think that the information is not being fairly presented. What we have said all along, what our research team has said all along, and ed quality, and by the way, Bonnie and Nancy are both on ed quality Subcommittee, and if you feel the ed quality Subcommittee is not doing a good enough job.
There's nothing about that.
You've got two members on your sub, on your committee who are on the facts Subcommittee. And I can tell you, we're doing a lot of very good and hard work on that Subcommittee. But, but the point here is that when you combine resources and you combine programs and you combine electives, there's more available for your kids. There's no debating that. We're going to have more electives, we're going to have more courses, we're going to have more sports opportunities, we're going to have more extracurriculars available, we're going to have a lot more available to our kids. There's going to be a lot more opportunity. Now, you may debate whether having more translates into higher quality. You can debate that if you want, but there is no question that more will be available. You can offer a high school of 620 kids more than you offer a high school of 135, and there's really no getting around that. You may not agree with the underlying principle that giving more opportunity translates into better opportunity, but I can tell you, what we're hearing from the students is they want more, and this will allow them to have more.
Okay, thank you very much. I am going to end it with this. I have sent on several occasions, Deb requests to have certain items that are related to education put on the agenda. They have been turned down because we had to hear from the experts. I never would have gone onto education with my 50 years of education background if I was thinking that I was a checkoff just for outside consultants. I hope you're hearing the frustration. Kim's got expertise in finance that are nowhere near. But you know what? When you say, Lucy, the reality is, it's geography. Well, let's put it out there. This building was built for a much larger capacity. We could hold everyone. I'm not debating the reality of geography, but we have to be forthcoming. I cannot in any way understand, no matter how many times I've gone through things, that Sheffield's saving 600 and something thousand dollars. I hope you hear our questions, and I would suggest, because of time and taking so much of Lucy's, that we just, if we have questions, please post them.
I will defer my last one, but I know Nancy wanted to say one more thing really quick.
This is regarding the ed committee. I've not been able to go because of when it, when, when the meetings are scheduled. I'm still working, so that's been the issue there. So I think that that, and that has been, that has been discussed, so, just for the record, that's all. Thanks, Lucy.
Okay. Yes.
That means that you're the only one there representing us on the ed committee.
I'm Monday, I'm an alternate to that committee, but I also will be going from May 8th to May 31st.
Anyway, thank you. I think that, I appreciate that. Thanks for the time. I appreciate that.
So, once again.
Well, the Subcommittee meetings are open. Encourage everyone to come.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Bonnie, this is the first time I'm hearing that you asked for something to be on an agenda, and it didn't happen.
For three years.
You haven't voiced that objection in an Educational Quality Subcommittee meeting that I've attended, so, you know.
I don't say it at the open meeting when I get rejected in writing.
Well, we're at an open meeting right now.
All right, you guys. Yeah, I know, but we're doing that, and I think the fact is, there are people who are really interested. I mean, you met with Eric Butler, so did I, and he asked somebody, this is somebody who has gazillion years of Harvard educational leader. It turns out our paths crossed in Washington with school to career, but he was asking me the same questions. So I, Lucy, you do.
Well, Eric is brand new to this process, but I just started looking at it a month ago, so.
I think, I think, can we move on?
No, I, I know that. I'm saying, I'm saying the fact of some people are interested when you give answers that he's questioning, well, why aren't you doing X, Y, or Z? So let's end it here. We're past, again, Lucy, you're obviously welcome to stay, and thank you so much for your time once again. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
Oh, and by the way, Bonnie.
Yes, yes.
Your correction to the minutes was correct. I was reading off of the, the regional agreement text, and it's at least.
Oh, great, thank you.
At least a week apart or 14 days apart, whatever those are. That was a correct correction to the minutes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have, our representatives have anything that they want to add in terms of the planning board? No, no. I'm going to ask if any, because I have been getting feedback.
Sorry.
Well, I have one thing. Numbers don't correlate with quality. There's, so saying that we'll have more courses or more, you know, doesn't mean we'll have more quality education. Quality has a lot to do with commitment and how the, how the faculty work together and, you know, respond to the needs of the kids and, you know, the administration respond to the needs of the kids and that kind of stuff. So, yeah, a bigger school may have more classrooms, it doesn't mean they'll have more quality.
Or opportunities.
Well, I think one of the big things that David brought up is what I've been hearing a lot of. You know, we haven't done anything to assuage the concerns of our population. Yes, David?
To Mr. DePice's point, and then here, the, having a wider array of classes is probably a net good for the students, but without something more than, well, we're going to have more, like, parents aren't going to be satisfied with that answer. They need to know something along the lines of more of what? What are they getting out of this process? That's what everybody keeps asking us. What are we getting out of this process? And the only answer we get is, well, the answer we got out of Ms. Pressker here is, well, we don't know, that's up to the new school committee. That's what the voters want to know, and I don't think any of them are going to be prepared to vote yes if they can't get any sort of idea about what that's actually going to look like. Now, if we're going to convince the voters that this is a good thing, they simply require more information than is presently available from the planning board.
That was clear.
Oh, okay.
That was clear in what Beth gave us from the February 7 summary and what we heard loud and clear in the tack pack. What is the new vision? And I can tell you, when Jane and I both said we wanted to be on education quality, we thought, I think at that point, we were the, out of the 24 people, the only two educators. So we really thought that that would be drawn upon. It's, it's, it's a frustration, and I, I feel the same thing. We sat there in the tack pack, and the things that we could not answer are the very issues of, give me a sense of what this will cost me, and what is this new vision? Because I believe firmly, if we join together and had a new vision for education, that increases the number of people who move into our communities, it increases involvement, it, it answers what parents are asking. So not disagreeing there. Kim?
So my major concern is knowing the lack of involvement with our students. One had eight showing up, one had 19 showing up. The other one had, my, my son's gone to all these, for the most part.
He's so cute.
And, thank you. And he was very dismayed when they were asking questions that the woman's like, well, like somebody specifically asked, are we going to get a new hockey rink? And whoever's running it, which I do not know, says, oh, well, that's a good possibility. So that's misleading to a sixth grader, okay? So if that presentation on what the students wants is based, because that's not, I've been to them, I showed up one with math, and there was only four people there. I mean, our district isn't participating, so whose vision are they showing and presenting with these experts? Our children are. I mean, the 19, 14 were ours, had no interest in merging, five was theirs, who have definitely interest in merging because they get a new school, and I can understand that. The one at Simon's Rock, there was eight children there. So do I feel comfortable that two of our students out of eight is that's what they're taking as what our students want? No, I do not. So.
Well, I can tell you this, I, Laura Rodriguez, well, your predecessor.
Yes.
Keeps working with Railroad Street Youth Project. Nancy, I see you. And she worked with the students to put together a presentation, and she wanted someone from the planning board. And what they did at DeBois.
Again, DeBois.
They brought all of their kids together. Now, their middle school is not like our middle school.
I know.
So what happened was, they had a senior from Monument, gave a very, very good report, but then when there were questions, so I thought others were going to answer that, it was like, okay, Bonnie, we need you now. And the kids were, had real gut concerns. They are worried about things like, where am I going next year? And, and you know what I'm saying? Don't worry. You're, you know, you're going over to Monument, there is not a new school building yet, don't worry. Or, or the student who asked, my little brother or sister is still at New Marlboro Central. Will they be able to come here? You know, they asked real gut questions, and the assistant principal, who had been going around from like, class, homeroom, classroom to homeroom, classroom, explaining the program. And he really was gung ho, no disparaging in any way, but he came over to me after everybody left, and he said, thank you, you know, I really learned a lot. So he, and he's new.
Yeah.
So we don't know. And, you know, I left, the kids were, you know, the usual adorable middle schoolers and everything, but you, it is a concern. What is it? And remember, they bring it home to their parents.
But it's not our children being represented, and that's my concern.
Well, they did have, I don't know, I wasn't invited here.
No, I, I know the numbers of the meeting because it's, it's, you know, I, my son was there, and staff was there, and people talk, and I showed up for this.
Well, I think we, with our outreach committee, we're going to have to address. Nancy?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that, Lucy, I think that you've got a pretty good sense of where things are across much of the, much of the district and the questions that are being asked, so, and I think they've been pretty well, pretty clearly stated. So I guess I'm saying that from my standpoint, I think we can move on, but I think it's really important that these get heard and not dismissed. Yeah, that's all. And thank you, but I think we need to move on.
Well, Nancy, I'd appreciate, I'd love the opportunity to work together with you on community outreach.
Okay, we'll do it weekend.
It's a standing request that we have.
We'll do it weekend. Thanks, Lucy.
Okay, so does anyone else on the planning board? And now Dennis.
I guess, you know, if I could make a comment.
You may.
We just spent a half hour, over a half hour, on things that we, as a school committee, aren't even supposed to be focusing on. You know, we're not supposed to be focusing on an eight-town school, you know? We're supposed to be focusing on what we were elected and appointed for to do, which is limited to the Southern Berkshire Regional School District. And, you know, I, that's why I think, for example, this should never have happened, period. You know, this is not our purview as a body to deal with. We're supposed to be dealing with the betterment of this district, period. That's it.
All right. Can I just ask you a question with that?
Sure, you can ask me anything.
Okay. Half of our school committee is on the regional planning board. It would be inappropriate for us to be meeting separately elsewhere and whatever. The one place where we can get feedback is we have an open meeting here, and I would say because we agreed as the old school committee to engage in this process, which is is morphed into a whole other thing, we had originally spoken, you know, of how we were going to deal, whether it was collaboration or whatever. These are critical points, and I'm sure as a school committee member, don't people ask you about the merger?
No. No one has ever asked me about the merger.
Really?
Really?
No.
Wow. All right. On that note, I'm taking your recommendation for us to move ahead. All right. Thank you all, you know the avenues, for expressing additional concerns, issues, we're moving on to the chairman's.
Hey, Bonnie. Bonnie, sorry, just to say, you do have your student spotlight and...
Oh, I'm sorry, Jessica.
...and representative joined us late.
Oh, great.
Susan Mapstone's here, too.
So, I don't know if they're still...
Jessica, you there?
Hello. Hi.
Hi. Are you ready to give your presentation?
Yes, I am. I don't have much to update, like, outside of NHS, but we, I believe I did mention this last time, but for the prom, it's already posted all over social media, and I'm spreading the news on when to buy the tickets. As for NHS, on May 3rd, we're going to get a grant award from the Eagle Fund, and let's talk about, we're going to need some volunteers to set up the refreshments and everything. And then, on the 4th is the induction ceremony for NHS as well. And I know interact, we continuously do have meetings, and we're planning to do one more, I guess, like last year off of seniors, and seniors are planning their senior school day as well, so.
We didn't hear about it.
Yeah.
Jessica, I have a question. Have the National Honor Society sent out an invitation to the school committee to attend the induction?
I'm not sure exactly. I think they have talked to the officers about that, or it was a report, but I know that we could have the date set, and if there happens to be, like, I know this is going to be held outside, so if there happens to be weather issues, it'll be held inside, I believe.
Oh, so it won't be in the atrium?
Um, if, if that will be the outdoor classroom.
I think we have a comment from your principal.
Yeah, I'll just jump in. They, I believe the intention was to tell the new members that are being inducted, they were going to get a letter either today or tomorrow, and they were going to follow up with the invitation to school committee once those members knew that they were in. But the ceremony is going to be Thursday, May 4th, next Thursday, at 6 o'clock. And Jessica was correct, we intend to do it in the outdoor classroom again. We did it out there last year, which would be nice, and if there's inclement weather, we will move it inside, maybe use the atrium out here, by the library, depending on how many guests we're going to have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If any of you want, it's lovely ceremony, yes.
I have a good question. What means is that, when they join the National Honor Society?
Sophomores.
Sophomores.
When they hit their sophomore year, they get a letter, if they're, it's based, the initial grade is, it's based on their grade point average.
I need that, I just don't know the age.
And then, so they send it out to the sophomore starting, and then sophomores and juniors.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's both, or if they didn't make it in their sophomore year. All right. Okay, so it's, this coming Thursday, 6 o'clock, is the induction, and we'll get information based on whether, where it is. Okay. Jessica, is that it?
That's all I have for right now. It was, I, I just found out about the meeting a whole hours ago, so I don't really have time to recruit for any other grades.
Okay.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for making time. And, do we have anyone else? No. Is Susan Mapstone, Susanna Map, going there for...
Hola, I'm here.
Okay.
Hola, everybody.
Hola.
Charles just asked me to come in for a second and just let you know what we're doing. He was interested in displaying our work, that we're doing hands-on regarding culture in the classroom, because in the elementary foreign language classroom, we not only focus on the language, on learning Spanish, we also focus on different cultures. And that was pretty much everything that Charles asked me to come and to let you know. We've been focusing on fourth, fifth, and sixth grade because they do the country studies. And they do Puerto Rico, Mexico, and Spain, respectively.
Mm-hmm.
And you guys have any questions, or, I don't know.
Anyone have any questions?
God, just, Charles showed us the video, and it's so cool.
Can't believe the fourth graders are able to do, I mean, those were beautiful production work.
Yes, they do real good work. Honestly, it's a lot of beautiful costumes and beautiful hands-on projects, and they learn a lot. I think that when I meet them afterwards, and they're in the high school, they always tell me, oh, I remember when we cooked empanada, or, I remember when we did the mexicante masks, or, all of, those are the things that they remember, you know?
You just answered my, you just answered my follow-up question. Okay, do we have any other questions? Thank you so much for taking the time to join us.
Oh, anytime.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you. Adios.
Adios. Okay, chairman's report. All right, simple one, I sent everybody a note about the Dorothy Presser gathering, and David, I know you had asked to make it six, so we will do six to nine, but is there anyone who cannot make June 7?
There's no, like, graduations or anything.
No, no.
That I'm going to...
No, no.
Seven June, right?
Yes. Well, don't rub in how much of a wonderful time you've had on your Malivacation. All right, so, put June 7 at, from 6 to 9, I have been trying to see if we will stage the, have this in the back room at the Frog, used to be the bridge, but he still hasn't called me back, so I will keep pursuing it. We'll figure someplace to go. All right, so...
That's a Wednesday.
Yes, yes. Okay, so, that's it. In there. Next is really simple, I've asked Lynette to give everybody, it is not in the handbook, the summary sheet on minutes, a real simple form, so you should be getting that. Remember, when your committee meets, you've got to approve the prior meetings, minutes, and send them to Lynette. She has to have them. I have two other things. Town meeting, and, and really, Dennis brought up a very good point here. We are there, assuming everybody's show, we are there for our 2024 school budget. We are not there in any way with merger. This is not it. If, we don't want people to get confused in any way, in no way was our budget built on anything having to do with merger, it is our straightforward merger. In...
Budget.
It's, right. Yeah, okay, and I, right. It's our straightforward budget. Sheffield, Beth, do you have anyone coming with, or you're handling everything for the finances at all?
Well, I, I always try to be in attendance at all of them. Monday is tricky because two are happening within an hour of each other, and I can't always guarantee that I can get from one to the other, so I do often appreciate if the New Marlboro representatives are there, because I can't get from, often Sheffield over there in time. So, someone may have to be able to, or we might, we might split between the business office and myself, but it's, it's hard. I like to split myself in half, but I can't. So, that'll happen on Monday, but I, there are, you know, talking points, or if you even, I could forward to the school committee, the, really, the talking points that I put in the newsletter, just on the budget to have in front of you, if you feel like you might need to reference that. It's a lot to remember.
Yeah, I think it's a lot to remember, and a lot to cover, and so, yeah, and we want to help that we can get Marlboro to better, both of us are new to the, both of us are new to the board, and, or to the committee, and to the process, so, yeah, we want to help them get more bullets.
So, points. I'll be at Monterey, but I think I told you that, but I also was going to show...
Wait, wait, another, for, cross, please. Kim?
I say, I was going to go to Monterey's, but I also told Beth that I know the people on the finance committee up in Alfred, so I might join them up there for their town meeting, too, just to hang out.
Thank you.
Because I like Alfred.
Thank you very much. So, basically, what we've always done is, you know, you try to get a sense of whether you need to speak or not need to speak. It could go with the folder, our folder that reached so many people, hopefully. People came very well-prepared last year. I mean, we had Sheffield next to no questions at all. Yes, Nancy?
At New Marlboro, we had questions, but Jane was as the committee chair, as the committee chair, Jane was able to answer them without any problem, which was just really easy for her to do, so that, you know, that, that made a difference, so I'm not sure that I can, we're not sure that we can talk.
Review everything, I just don't know if I'll be able to answer.
Excuse me, you have to speak up. Yes?
No, I mean, I'm just not sure if I'll be able to answer all the questions they have, and I'll review everything that we've been given, but...
I, I mean, I don't anticipate that there's a particular hot issue, like, last year we had a specific issue because we were, you know, it was a new transportation contract, you know, there were certain, there's, you know, we certainly know, but I mean, I think our practice has always been to align all of our school committee work throughout the year with our strategy for continuous improvement. There shouldn't be really any surprises that people can't answer based on their work, and if you need to, you can look down, and there will be, you know, the specific, what are we spending out of E and D, what are we spending? Now, I, I'm not sure if someone asked you the E and D calculation, if you're going to be able to give that, but, you know, which, in certain places, I have been asked that, so I'm, when I, I get there, I will be able to answer those questions, but I don't really anticipate that there should be a shocking question that people shouldn't be able to respond to if they just review the talking points ahead of time.
And if any of you want, need to come, I mean, I have to ask the town moderator for permission to speak, but if you think you need the moral support, anywhere...
You'd have to get from Sheffield over to, which is, it's not as short.
Oh, with, I know, with the roads...
And you have to park and walk.
You're in town, yours is at...
Fire department.
At the fire department. Well, I think you'll be fine with, but if anybody feels they need that additional...
That's on the record, everybody.
Okay. But please, go, go over the material.
And feel free to call me over the week, you know, before you get there, or during the day on Monday, if you're not sure.
This is picking up everything.
Okay, sir.
Okay. Okay, the other is a question for us to decide how we want to handle or not handle the report that was, that the two bar foundation individuals presented to the education subcommittee of the regional planning board. So, the request was to Beth and I, in terms of dissemination, did we want to have them make a presentation? And if so, do we want them to make the presentation just to us? Do we want to hold another community convening, et cetera? So, that is something we agreed that we would bring before you. And let's start with Kim.
Well, can I just say one more thing?
Well, please do.
And I think the request was that, just to add to it, it had, they would like it done prior to the end of the school year.
Oh, right.
So, I think that's important, because there's a lot of dates, so when you're considering that, we have to think about skirting around lots, if you're going to get people to come, right, we have to go around, work around a lot of dates, so we just want to be mindful of that.
Kim?
Well, as I stated before, my concerns are, I read their facts and their slides that they had put up on their Facebook page, because they put that data up there, and I'm looking at the things, one student said, another student said, and knowing that our students were not really represented in any of these, you know, where they're, like I said, my son attended almost every of these meetings, I attended several of these meetings just to, you know, be there, hang out, see what they were doing. And I, again, I heard one of the meetings that they, the kids felt misled because of people who, again, like I said, the ice skating rink, you don't tell a sixth grader you could get an ice skating rink, okay? So, if they're using that data and those answers at that time, because one kid was like, oh, yeah, I want, you know, especially hockey players, so I have no interest in listening to them if that's the data they're using, and I really don't have interest in listening to the data that they're gathering from Berkshire Hills, because we all know Berkshire Hills wants a new school. So, if our students were fairly represented, instead of like, eight people, you know, 19 people, or not even 19, 14 people, three people, then I would say, oh, great, yeah, let's see what our kids have to say. And I'm not discounting the fact that those children do not have voices, but I think they're misconstruing a lot of things, and I don't feel it's pertinent, especially when I hear that, well, there's no clear plan on education.
Let me just respond, having seen the presentation at the education outreach. This is more a broader approach. So, it looks at, and a lot of the material we know, but it looks at, on a broader approach as to educational advantages. And they, I found that they, there is a lot of good material in there, putting aside exactly the issues that you've raised. So, do I think we would learn from it? Yeah, I think a lot of people would. Do I think, given, you know, what we've heard, is, it's really a call, unless Beth, you disagree, I think it's a call of the school committee and this, and you, Beth, as to, you know, do we want to make this an outreach? Or are we going to get, you know, frustration? Okay, David?
To both the, Kim and Dennis's points earlier, I think this has to be a community conversation or some format like that, where we get the maximum engagement from the parents and the voters, because ultimately, we don't have any real decision-making authority, and we want the members of the committee to hear from us, from our voters, from the students here. And the best way for us to facilitate that is for us to have the community conversation, to have the maximum number of residents of all the towns there to see the information firsthand, as opposed to us getting it and then people asking us questions about something we don't really know and don't have any authority over. So, I, I think if we're going to have the presentation, it has to be a community conversation, otherwise, it's, it's just pointless.
I agree.
I would agree. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we... Uh, yes, I move that we make it a community conversation.
Second.
Okay, all right. So, we now have a motion, the second. Does anyone want, we've heard your reasoning, anyone want to speak against it?
Like I said, they're not hearing from our kids. He said they hear from our kids, but they're not hearing from our kids. And that's why I'm against this particular one. And that's it. If they're, if our kids actually engage, because how many students do we have? And how many events have they hosted? And how many kids showed up? So, it's not hearing from our kids. I don't want our community to hear from Berkshire Hills kids. I want the community to hear from our kids, what they want.
Well, I think one of the advantages in what David's suggesting, if we do it the way we did the February 7th, I mean, we had the largest turnout of any gathering that's taken place in three years. If we do it that way, we encourage the kids and the, and the teachers to come. You know, they're the ones who would raise their hand and say, that's not true for me. So, if we go that way, all right.
So, like, say, the merge committee member that misrepresented certain things, they would not be speaking at this event, would they?
No.
It would just be the consultants.
It's the consultants' report.
And we are free to ask the consultant's questions.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's exactly what it would be.
Okay.
A dialogue. Art, did you want to say something there?
Well, I think this committee's been disregarded through this whole process. So, every time everybody asks questions, there are never any answers. I'm against this. That's my own opinion.
Do we have any, yes, Jim?
Yeah, I also heard, and the BAR Foundation people, a couple of things. I thought it was a bit more jargon than I would have liked to hear. If we're going to do it as David's suggesting, as a community event, one, who's going to pay for it? And two, what are the logistics, when, where, you know, that sort of thing, if that can be worked out, I, I.
It's no money.
It may be worth, it may be worth it.
There's no money, because there's some judgment.
Because the, the BAR Foundation people, they, there is, it's tight, but there is money in the grant. So, one, two, we'd be using our, we'd run it the way we ran the February 7th.
Okay. That answers the questions.
That answers your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
David has his hand.
Yep. Bonnie, to Kim's point about hearing from members of the school committee that may or may not have misrepresented things.
Not the school committee.
No, no, I'm talking to me, merge committee, yes, yes. That's, that's what I'm referring to, sorry. That was unclear. While it's not necessarily required, I'm certainly not necessarily moving that we stay then in the motion, I, I think it would be helpful if there was a relevant representative of the eight towns committee there to hear what the members of our town and our students have to say. Because just listening to the presentation by what it sounds like is a bunch of lawyers, i- is not helpful. We, we want a way for the, the eight-town committee to hear from us. That's, that's Kim's concern, is that they're not hearing from us. And so, we don't want to just hear them, we want them to hear from us. That needs to be a part of the conversation for it to really be meaningful for everyone involved.
Well, we would, the same way we did for the February 7th, then, we would make it clear to elected officials of the five towns, of the members of the regional planning board, might as well maximize the use of the little bit of money that's left in the grant. And, you know, we were clearly able to get a, you know, a turnout. Will they come out again? And as Beth pointed out, you know, the whole issue of this time of the year. But I think what you're suggesting is something which would get a lot of the outreach that we're concerned about. They don't need to preach to us, which is something Beth pointed out to me yesterday.
Well, I just, I just felt like a community conversation was a better opportunity to have more stakeholders be present, as opposed to having it be one of the three set school committee meetings that's left, you know? So, that was my whole idea for thinking about it.
Want to make sure it's at a time that people can come, like our community conversation. That is why we had turnout also. It wasn't at 5:30, or 5:00, or 9:30 in the morning, or 3:00 in the afternoon. It was where people got done work, had dinner, and could come. You know, their kids were home.
We'll do childcare.
We did the childcare, right.
So, you know, so we can maximize that.
Jesse, you'll be doing childcare. No. Yeah.
So, as long as they agree to something like that, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so, I will say this. If, if we vote for it, I will immediately contact Jake and say, put aside, you know, whatever, some money for, and let's figure out the issues. And maybe, I don't know, Nancy, when you have your next community outreach, but we would have to decide pretty soon.
Is our next meeting?
Oh, before the school committee?
Yes.
Meeting, that's right, we decided that. Okay. So, I think we can get a lot of that working even sooner. All right. So, I will say, let's take a vote. David?
Yes.
Nancy? Sarah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Art?
No.
Jim? Kyle? And Bonnie's, yes. So, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and one, no. Thank you very much for a succinct.
Lies are lies.
And I will go ahead with doing that. All right. So, we've settled, remember, it's the 7th, we're having our June 7th with Dorothy. We're going to figure out a time, and whatever for, for this gathering, and I, my job is to call Jake right away. Okay. There was another charge, which was the whole charge of trying to get legal opinion on, on if a town, you know, if a closing, et cetera. Beth has made outreach, our poor attorney went on a wonderful vacation and then got sick. So, we will continue to move ahead in that, and I also will, I'm bringing it to the regional planning board through, let's, someone has to come up with some answers. Yes, it would. Okay, so with that, I am turning it over to Beth.
Sure. So, I'm gonna be brief, because we had a nice April break in between the last time we met and today, but I just wanted to share where Julie and I spent our day today. As you know, we have been participating in the Mass Association of School Superintendent's diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging work for this entire year, and today was the capstone presentation. There's about 150 of us, I believe, from across the state, who have been working in six cohorts right now at different levels. And I had the pleasure of representing, speaking, doing a little presentation about my experience in it for cohort number one today, so I hope I, I did us proud. But we, it was, it was a really amazing experience. I think we learned a tremendous amount. I think there's a tremendous amount of work to do, but we're hoping that this is just the beginning and not the end of this type of work. And, you know, it's, it's transformational in a lot of ways, when you are really reflective and vulnerable with thinking about equity and, and ensuring that students feel belonged and welcome. And I think that's the most important thing, and so, actually probably most, more important than anything, if they're gonna be ready to learn. So, I think Sandy and, we, and Julie and I have been doing this work as central office, and we've involved the administrative team, and the teachers have done it on some early professional development on it, but it's going to be part of the work that we do on an ongoing basis. It's gonna be part of who we are. So, it was powerful work, and I don't know if Julie has anything to add to that, but I think, that was a lot today. It's very emotional work, and when you, when you talk about some of the moments that you've had in your life, and so, it, it was, it was, it was a good experience. That's all I'm sharing for today, because it was a lot. I'm on the decompression.
Yeah. Julie, did you want to add?
I will agree with Beth, it was a, it was an intense day. The whole process is very intense and very reflective. And one thing that was discussed a lot when we were there today was the value of doing this work, not at, just as our team, but making sure we do this work with our school committee. And I think we are both proud to know that we have done some of this work with our school committee, and we've heard from other districts where their school committee had not stepped into this work, and the problems that that can bring. So, we are very grateful that you are joining us on this whole trip, because it's a long one.
Well, I just want, Sandy led us in this a number of years ago. And I think whatever you come up with, we have a really good foundation, because that's been, you know, an issue that's important to us, multiple issues that have been really important to us in our district. Yes, David?
Regarding the diversity initiatives, is there some sort of mandatory training connected to that, that the teachers and the faculty is going to be required to take? And what, like you said, it's very difficult work. If it's a meeting about, about how things are done at school, why is that so emotionally involved? What really, what is it all about?
So, I don't know if we have enough time. No, right, I would like, I'd like to have a, I'm happy to have a deeper conversation. I think it's one we should have when we're talking about our district improvement plan, we're talking about initiatives, much, much deeper. But, for instance, the cohort that I was in did a book study, and that book study challenged you to look at, they gave you definitions, they gave you concepts, and they challenged you to look at your own beliefs system and own examples of things. And, and just to be reflective about whether or not you consciously or unconsciously, or, or not consciously, whatever, were doing things that might not be equitable, might be just done in silence, maybe done out of fear for talking about a very difficult topic in a community that might not be ready to talk about it. And there's a whole lot of different things, but I, I think until you start doing the work, you don't even know that you need to do it in some cases. And I think it was surprising in some ways. And I think when I, you know, I, I told a story, I'm not telling it here, but I, I told a story about something, you know, when, with, with my children, that I thought I was doing something the right way, and I realized that I should have done something different. So, I think it can be very powerful and emotional to you when you think about something that you didn't know or you didn't realize had a wider effect on more people. So, it's just, it's, it's cultural awareness, it's equity for all, it's just looking at the, at children, at faculty and staff, at people with a different lens. And that could lead you to do, to lead differently, to do work differently. And I think there's nothing wrong with that, it's just another way of looking at the work.
Right, okay. I guess the question I'm looking to. The answer is, what is the nature of that work? And how is the, inside the scope of what the school is supposed to be doing? Like, what work are you referring to needing to be done to make education fairer? And what do you mean by equity? Because if the goal is to provide all, the, the same opportunities to students, that's one thing. If the goal is to provide the same outcome for the students, that's something different entirely.
Right, it's more, it's, right, it's, it's more about opportunity and access to, for everybody, as opposed to, you can't, you can't guarantee outcomes for every single person to be the same, right?
Right, yes.
But you can guarantee opportunities and access for everybody.
And so, there is a set of policy prescriptions associated with this?
I don't think we're there yet. And I, I think, I think we have things in place, but I think what people are starting to do is really look at their data in the lens of equity meeting. Look at your subjects, look at where people, look at students, look at placements, look at opportunity. And, and make sure that everybody does have that access, and if they don't, why not? And if, and what could we do differently? What barriers can we remove? How can we support students and families better? How can we provide better professional development in order to make those things happen? It's a big thing, it's not a little thing, but we're trying to get at that. How do we make it better? That's all.
I can give you one little example of a case where it might have been totally innocuous, but a book that was being used throughout the sixth grade 10 years ago should not have been used. It was something that had been here for ages and ages. The teacher hadn't, you know, looked at it in terms of the fact there were racial issues, there were ethnic issues. And if you, and I saw when everybody went through all the curriculum work and the selections of new material, there is a whole different level of sensitivity that exists. So, you're not guaranteeing, as you say, you're not guaranteeing the outcome, but what you're aiming to do is make sure that we do not have any child who is offended because we weren't appropriately sensitive. So, and I'm going, again, time, I think this is a much larger discussion, since we have a curriculum meeting coming up, it might be a great place for it. So, if you could hold with that, and I'm gonna turn, oh, you had said that.
No, I just, that was enough for today.
So, Julie?
Thank you, Bonnie. Yes, so the one thing I was going to say is that we're having a curriculum subcommittee meeting on May 9th from 5:30 to 6:30, and so, we can tackle some of these harder issues that we don't have time for in this open meeting. And the other thing that I was only going to say is that we're going to have an Educating Our Eagles edition coming out probably by Monday. Carrie Giordano does an amazing job putting it together. And then after that, there'll be one more edition this year, where she kind of does a year at a glance, which is amazing. And this will complete our second year of having this product, and we're very proud of it. And we're very grateful to have someone talented to put it all together.
And can you make sure everyone in this whole committee has the link to do it, to get to it?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, any questions, Julie? Moving along. We are into energy.
We're not into energy, because they were not ready, so they will be joining us at the May 11th. So, our legal is working with their legal.
Okay.
Sandy's, Sandy's way of a report.
What about Sandy?
Oh, my God.
I have some positive things, so I just wanted to be able to share them all.
I am so sorry.
So, good evening. I just have four things, I won't be long, but it's important for you to know. I know I reported, I think at the last meeting, that we had a number of our, our entire pre-K kindergarten program trained in CPR, first aid, and AED, and we had 11 more people trained yesterday. So, I'm really grateful that we're having this up. So, I'm really grateful that we're having this opportunity, because I think everybody's feeling a little more at ease. The conversations that I'm having, as they're getting ready to go on field trips, et cetera, is that people are feeling more prepared. So, that's good. Our pre-kindergarten and kindergarten screening fair is going to be June 23rd. We're looking right now with Kelly McDonald, McDonald, our early childhood coordinator, at the list of students who are going to be entering, and we're making a, she's working on a schedule, and we'll decide if we need an additional day. But they're doing some prep work with the students who are currently in pre-kindergarten, who will be staying, and getting those screenings done now, or earlier, not now, but earlier. And because June 23rd is a Friday, and then that leads into another week, which is challenging for many people. And summer program starts on June 26th and is running through July 27th, Monday through Thursday. And we are pulling that together right now, have a meeting, I hope, tomorrow morning to discuss kind of some logistics. We have, I believe, about 50 students signed up at the very moment.
That's crazy.
So, we're looking at class groupings and staffing right now and how things will run. And I'm talking next week with Maria Rundell again about how Flying Cloud might be able to be incorporated. Sometimes staffing has been a challenge, you know, over the course of this past few years here. So, we're looking at that and hoping we can incorporate that into the afternoon. And I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that next week on Wednesday at Berkshire Hills is the Special Olympics. And it starts at 9:00, and it will be, it'll go from about 9:00 to 12:00. We have 11 athletes who are participating, and quite a number of staff members who are helping prepare, and families who are coming. And I'm hearing maybe some of our classes are going to be able to go and support our athletes. So, that's just terrific. Weather's not looking fantastic. Cross your fingers. It's much better when it's 70 degrees and sunny than 49 and rain.
Can you read any for?
It's May 3rd, next Wednesday.
And what time does it start in?
Starts at 9:00. Right around there, between 9:00 and 9:30. It doesn't always start exactly at 9:00. But it's very exciting. The students really enjoy it, and it's great for all of us.
I want to say something, too. When my kids were at school here, we had, partially because my kids were in 4H, and part of what they had to do was community service. My kids went to all the, a whole bunch of Special Olympics events to help. And aside from the fact that they had a great time doing it, they both learned a lot, and I think it's a really, a fabulous experience to be an active part of the, of the work. And just one example, there wasn't the Special Olympics monument at Berkshire Hills. My son, who would, was famous for keeping his head down and not saying a word, they actually took his hat away from him in pre-K because they felt it was disrespectful on purpose. Yeah, anyway, he was, he was forced to be, asked to be the baseball caller for Special Olympics. And it was actually a Dallas Special Olympics. And it, it brought him out in a way that I, I can't even make it to say. So, there's a lot more to it than just the kids and everybody doing really well. It's a really, it's a huge community experience.
Huge community. If you go, you'll see what she's talking about. There's so many people that are there in support.
And everybody gets roped in. I mean, you don't know, you know, you really don't know where you're going to go. It's, yeah, it's great. It's really good.
So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto energy.
Sorry about that. I keep on putting my check marks on what I checked. So, we know that energy is postponed.
Correct.
We have unfinished business.
We do not.
Onto subcommittee reports. Sarah?
We have a meeting.
Okay. Nancy?
Community Relations is meeting on the 11th before the school committee, regular school committee meeting. I am having a meeting on Monday with Heather Packard at Mount, from Mass Audubon, regarding citizen lobby, citizen lobby group that we've been part, I've been part of for environmental, speaking up for environmental law advocacy and talking to her about ways that we can possibly do the same thing for education. So, I'm meeting with Heather, and I just need the laws, the numbers for the laws that are, specific laws that we would like to create.
Yeah, I, I saw your note. I will work on that tomorrow.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I, it just will make it easier to send it. So, yeah, that's it.
Okay. And one of the things, Kim, thank you so much. Kim left me a message and said, even though it wanted to be canceled, that she would be representing the school committee at the Step Up events and the Ice Cream Social. And that's the type of thing, you know, when we're doing things and we're going out there, you know, we want to identify. So, thank you. Did they come up with a due date?
I don't know that he said.
Yes.
Oh, yes, he did.
He sent it out today.
He sent it out today.
May 8.
May 8.
Is when we're going to do the ice cream social.
If you've never gone to that.
The ice cream socials?
Oh, the ice cream social is cool, too. But the.
Why you think I'm going? I got chocolate sauce.
The, the orientation is great, because you're hearing the different departments and what the kids are going to be exposed to, and staff really step, steps up to the step up. So, okay. And Dennis, good old policy reading number two.
Well, tonight, we're having the second read on BEDH public comment at school committee meetings, which is in your handout.
The last page.
It's the last, yeah, it was the last page. Okay. So, basically, we need to vote on this. So, you might, why don't we just take a couple of shakes of the tail or whatever to let everybody scan it, if you haven't already, you know, read it thoroughly. Go ahead.
The one question I have, and I should have brought this up before. At one point, what we did is we allowed public comment both at the beginning and the end of the meeting. Can we have that flexibility? Should we have it? Or leave it the way it is?
I, I personally think we should leave it the way it is. I mean, based, basically, these changes were put in, as many of you recall, based upon the fact that there seemed to be a bubble in terms of very disruptive people coming to public meetings. And this was basically the, the policy subcommittees, it was, it was like the first meeting, basically. And, and this was, this was the only one we got done in that first meeting.
I remember you said that. All right, I withdraw what I said. I'm totally fine.
I have a question. So, this is, takes care of anybody who wants to speak?
Yes.
That is not a member of our school committee? Or who is not recognized as?
No, this, this is not, this is public comment.
Public comment.
Right. So, it doesn't, like, say, just want to make sure, say, oh, I don't know. Chris Thompson's group comes in and they're allowed as much time as they need, correct?
Because.
This is just for the public. It's guiding the public comment.
At the beginning of the school.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
You're still confused?
No, I just, no, I'm not at all.
So, would somebody like to call the question?
Call the question. Oh, wait, no.
Wait, do we have a question? Who has a question? David's down there.
David?
I was going to call one.
Oh.
All right. Question's been called. We'll take a vote. David?
Yes.
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 Yes. Congratulations.
That's it.
Okay.
I just have a question out of the vote. Why did the, the MS, they, they raised, Carl brought up at the last meeting that they got rid of this rule, right?
They didn't, so.
In the advisement?
They're, they did not, actually.
They did not?
No.
Because they looked it up, and it did say that they did get rid of it, but then they didn't?
No, no. What they did is they got rid of, Lynette sent a clarification over to Carl today.
Oh, okay.
They got rid of B E D E H dash E.
Dash.
Not this one.
Oh, okay.
And so, she sent that clarification.
I have a long Personnel and Negotiations report. We didn't meet, we don't need to, right now.
They say FIBR, yeah.
Art?
No building or grounds.
Jim?
Yeah, we have. We said we'd have stuff at our meetings. There's lots of sports, so you guys should go on the, that's been on the website. Go Eagles. Some of the things we could do there.
Yeah, we've got, it's, Sarah's got coffee. I have coffee, so.
Yep.
Oh, good. You asked for sports, so I made a calendar.
Thank you.
There's other things on there, just that not Special Olympics, which is a fun.
There's an event calendar that.
Has that.
I'm going to try to make that one up, that, the Special Olympics, only like five miles.
Thank you.
Okay.
See that self-reflection we were talking about earlier? See that self-reflection we were talking about earlier? There's, there's one.
Okay, that's.
Can Sarah, can Sarah hand out?
Please.
Okay, all right. Here you go.
I love that week summary that you did of athletic events.
I didn't do a thing. What I did, Mr. King does an amazing job, and when I saw it, I had him, our athletic director, did the week summary. So, when I saw it after our long discussion last time, I thought, I'm just going to forward this right now, because it came out.
Oh, I was so happy.
So, he, he does it, if, you'll see it on social media, if you're on social media. He, he often sends it to the faculty and staff, so if I see it, I will do my best to just send it out.
That's it.
That's it? All right. Well, let me just say, you're, you, with your going away and all, you've got to set up everything for Beth's evaluation. We have no choice about that.
Okay.
All right?
I will.
Thank you.
And it can't, it all can't wait till you come back.
Oh, it can't?
No. Because people need time to fill out the forms.
And you have to make the form?
And you have to make the form. You have to adjust.
Okay. It's hard to.
Okay.
It's hard to fill it out if there isn't any form.
Okay. And even though it's not on here, because it's still April, this Saturday at 11:00, two home games. Yeah, softball and baseball.
Yep.
Okay, so, yes. I mean, we, no alternative with that. All right.
It could be nice.
What?
It could be nice.
Executive minutes, we don't have. Curriculum Subcommittee, Julie has already said we're meeting. Anything with early childhood that we need to, nope, we're fine on all of that. And ad hoc, regional agreement with everything's going on at this point, I think it's, I defer to what's going on with our, the regional planning board, then we can tackle ours. Future agenda items, anything else that, that anybody wants to request now? And please, if you think of something, just shoot me and Beth an email. All right? And no executive session? And guess what?
Second. She didn't. That was good.
Well, and it's before 8:00.
Oh, my God.
David?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
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 Yes. Ah.